We'll now call on order the meeting of the Waco City Council on June 1st, 2021 to order at 2:00 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. As part of the first phase of the City of Waco reopening process, the City Council is now meeting in person along with limited city staff. We are following CDC guidance and taking appropriate safety precautions. Public participation will remain virtual. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic on March 16th, 2020, the Governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective March 16th, 2020 until further notice or until the state of disaster declaration expires. While providing as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public attending in person and is being broadcast live at WCCC.TV. Video and audio recordings will be made available to the public. According to the Governor and Attorney General, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to speak or submit their written comments on listed agenda items were asked to register with the City Secretary's Office by noon today. Individuals who registered to speak on an agenda item must limit their comments to three minutes. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. We will now recess the regular session and convene the work session with a report from the City Manager Bradley Ford.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. It is our first meeting after Labor Day, which means we're not tied up?
Memorial Day.
Or Memorial Day.
[laughing]
Between Memorial Day and Labor Day. That's why you're not seeing me in a tie this afternoon. But good afternoon to each of you.
City Manager, that might be something that we, you and I needed to post as a future agenda because we didn't get the memo out, I guess.
Perhaps. It has been noted.
Standing in solidarity with you.
Yeah. We do have one informal report on the agenda today. It's an update on critical water utilities projects from our utilities group. We also have one public hearing. It's Public Hearing 2021-330. Includes a public hearing and a resolution adopting revisions to our residential tax abatement guidelines and policy. This item will be covered later on by Galen Price, our interim Assistant City Manager. I do believe he's had significant feedback over the last day and may have some guidance on changes as well that he can cover here shortly. We have 26 resolutions.
Bradley, this is Holmes over here.
Oh, sure.
One quick comment on the informal report. Are we skipping? I just wanted to, I love the report. Lisa put a good report together here of the highlight, highlights of the larger water utilities project. I just want the citizenry of Waco to know that we are very intentional about how we prioritize these, about how we manage these in the context of doing utility work and roadwork at the same time. Since the time Dylan and I started on council, we've tried to coordinate those as closely as possible so we're not tearing up roads for utilities. But this is a big list and it's all underground, so people don't see it. I mean, you see the new roads, you see the new projects that the city's working on. But most of these projects you don't see, but there's, and on page 11, for people watching at home here, these have big price tags attached to them too. And the taxpayer money is going to, to keeping our water system and our wastewater systems in good shape. And these are all very critical, and I appreciate the work that Lisa Tire and the water and wastewater groups have done here. So, a good report.
Thanks, Councilmember.
Just to piggyback a little bit off of Councilmember Holmes, I was very happy to see South 26th Street project here on this informal report. I know for many people that live off the street or in the area have been asking when would the project be complete? I know it's been a long time coming, but I'm glad to see that the sewer portion will be completed by July 1st. And starting on, and I believe the pavement has already began on some of the street as well. As I've driven by there, I've noticed work taking place. So, thank you for bringing this before council today, and I'm happy to tell the people there that we're almost there to the finish line. So, just be patient a little bit longer, please.
All right. Thank you for those comments. We have 26 resolutions on the agenda today. I'm going to highlight just a, just a few. Resolution 2021-334 is a pre-development agreement between the city and the developer of the city-owned Floyd Casey site near Valley Mills Drive. This agreement that's on the agenda today will set in motion the creation of a development agreement for the site and really advance the project forward towards construction. Staff, and I know the council continue to see this development as a critical part of our efforts to support a revitalized city.
Thank you for bringing this also. You know, I'm very excited about this project. I know city staff has been very busy with this project, and I'm glad to see it moving forward. You know, it's very rare when a city has 100-plus acres in the core of the city to really develop and, and address some of those housing needs that we have in our city. And so, I'm looking forward as this, this project begins to move forward and progress, the great things that are going to be happening on the site. So, thank you for putting this on the agenda.
Also, on today's agenda, we have a kind of a batch of resolutions related to our benefit offerings to employees as well as other human resources items. Those resolutions are covered in 335 to 341. They include our voluntary vision insurance benefits, our basic group life and accidental death insurance policy, our long-term disability plan, our voluntary dental insurance benefits, workers' comp coverage, risk management, and expenditures for our occupational health program. These items represent quite a bit of work and also are an important part of our strategy to make the City of Waco an employer of choice in central Texas. So, appreciate the Human Resources Group work here. Resolution 342 is the next highlight. It is our conceptual design work at Cotton Palace Park. It's been a big priority in last year's budget, and you're seeing that work come to fruition now that we've completed our recent land swap with Waco Independent School District. This design work will reimagine one of Waco's oldest parks. Also of note in the item, the staff has committed to working to rename the park, working with constituent groups and residents to rename that park. Want to remind, we're not yet funded for construction on this project yet, but the, the design work will help to inform our future capital improvement program in the coming years.
As, as this park being in District 2, so excited that this park is going to get some TLC from the city. But also what's really exciting is, is the renaming of the park and the, and the possibility of, of giving the name of the park something more of a, that's better reflective of the neighborhood that it's in. And so, I appreciate staff's efforts as they move forward to find a new name for this park. That we're just really encompassing who lives in Waco and the area that the park is located in. So, thank you for that.
All right. And the last set of highlights I have today are, we have four transit grants on the agenda today, covered in resolutions 352 to 356, you'll notice. And those really help to support the continued operations of Waco Transit as well as the final item, supporting the acquisition of new vehicles. Transit service would be difficult to sustain without the support of these state and federal resources, and we're definitely appreciative to the staff working to access this funding. On the ordinances today, we have nine on the agenda. Only one is a first reading, and it's considering the addition of one police sergeant position. And I believe Chief Victorian's going to tell us more about that here in a few minutes with the relational policing program. The other eight are second readings, and if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to also let you know that at your place is a corrected exhibit to Resolution 2021-331 on the boards and commission. I highlighted the changes, and it was just a correction to the end terms for those appointments. And as for ordinance 2021-358, Mayor Me, Councilmembers Boarder Root and Palmer have filed affidavits of substantial interest on this item for the second reading.
Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I don't have any that I want to remove. Just a couple of comments as we go back through the resolutions, as I go back through the resolutions, I say. 332 and 333, I like these in that we are, businesses are coming back to us as a part of the negotiation in these web mech incentive programs. And as we are digesting the, the changes and as we're negotiating the changes, we are sticking the new standards of the $15 an hour back in there. And that's part of, part of the primary part of our negotiating is getting that in there. So, I like seeing that, that progress. And at the same time, keeping those businesses engaged and keeping, keeping the incentive programs alive. The other one I just wanted to touch on was, let's see, the Cedar Ridge sidewalks project. I like seeing that. That's in, I think Andrea and our district. That, and we talk about this, it seems like regularly now as a sidewalk initiative that our city is, we're seeing more and more people wanting sidewalks and that connectivity. And I think it's important that this one gets, gets in place. It's a, it's a big, $1.7 million project, so I'm happy to see that thing getting some legs. And the last one I wanted to touch on was that the Flat Rock Road wastewater improvements out in China Spring. Again, we're having wastewater challenges out there as that place, as that part of our city grows materially. So, I'm happy to see us better designing and measuring that wastewater capacity out in our China Spring neighborhoods as a first step there. So, that's nothing controversial, just good, good stuff.
To echo Councilmember Holmes, the, the connectivity projects, our sidewalk projects, our rails-to-trails projects, those are all incredibly important to, to keep us moving. So many times you're in areas that, that are heavy pedestrian areas. Cedar Ridge is a prime example as it is en route to our community college, in line with some community schools, shopping, grocery stores, those types of things. And sidewalks are important. How you get there safely is important. And I would especially like to thank our, our staff for the, being all, ever just nose to the ground, looking for alternative funding sources to pay for these things. You know, because these are grant programs and, and that the likes of, of all the staff looking out for the betterment of Waco and its people to, to make, make movement easier. So, I'm, I'm, I'm super excited about sidewalks. I'm crazy excited about the rails-to-trails program because that means that it's another set of area that people can exercise and engage that hadn't been committed in that fashion yet.
Right.
But here we are, and we're going to advance our city, just not even aesthetically, but you know, physically and from a health perspective. And those are things that are important for us to keep going. So, thank you staff, thank you city management staff for encouraging them to, to do that. And, and we look forward to what happens in the future.
One more comment after that. And it has to do with the, the trans, the one, the groups that you talked about there Bradley at the end on the transportation grants. The, where we're using these TDCs, the Transportation Development Credits as sort of a currency on our matching. I don't need a report, informal report on, just some follow-up on what is our inventory of these TDCs? Because they have some value here, obviously. And in addition to that, would we be able to use those in a potential, our Bus Rapid Transit? Because obviously they're associated
Good point.
as Transportation Development Credits to transit, transportation projects. So, if we have a big inventory of those and we could use them for BRT, that'd be great. But I applaud the fact that we're using those instead of cash because evidently we have some here and we're able to use them. So.
Good. We'll get you a follow-up on that.
Okay, thanks.
And then Mayor, one more resolution I was just going to highlight, Resolution 348. It's very, I'm happy to see that when the opportunity allows it, that some of our construction services are awarded to the MWBEs. And so, this is one example. I think it's great that the city works hard to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible with our taxpayers' money to work on projects throughout the city. But I think even if we can also award an MWB along the way, I think that makes it even just a little bit more special. So, I'm very proud to see that on the agenda today. So, thank you for your work in, in making this happen.
Very good. Any other resolutions worth noting or removing from the consent agenda? I think that staff, you can tell council's excited about this agenda because just, if you, just do a quick note, you know, great economic development projects, great grants for transit and sidewalks, Floyd Casey coming to fruition, infrastructure with the informal report and Flat, Flat Rock Road, and then the thoughtfulness behind the park, not just the revitalization of the park, but the renaming, and then the fiscally responsible and yet thoughtful procurement of the NWBEs contractors. Just shows a really well-rounded out agenda that is progressing our city in a really thoughtful and vibrant way. So, thank you to our staff for this work of pulling this agenda together and working with council to achieve our goals and priorities. There be, there are four comments. So, I guess, Esmeralda, am I right that 352, 353, 354, and 356 will all be pulled from the consent agenda? Is that correct?
That's correct. It's one comment for speaking on all of those.
For those. Okay. So, the consent agenda will include resolutions 2021-331 through 2021-356 with the exceptions of 2021-352, 353, 354, and 356. City Manager, please introduce the first work session.
All right. I'm excited about this one. Work session 2021-325. We joined next to me by Dr. Cheryl Victorian, our Chief of Police, who's making her debut presentation to the City Council today. She's of course been, been in Waco since mid-March. It's her 60th day, she tells me.
60th.
It doesn't feel like it because she's hit the ground running. And she's going to bring you an update today from the Police Department. She's going to cover, cover several topics, including an update on the department's shift to relational policing, recent efforts to reduce violent crime in Waco, as well as talk a little bit about her mental health response. So, I'm going to turn the, the mic over to Dr. Chief.
Thank you very much, sir.
Well, Chief.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to begin by just saying thank you to our mayor and to our city council and the citizens of Waco for the show of support and encouragement over the past several months. It's really has been a delight getting to know our community, getting out, becoming familiar with our city, meeting our community leaders, and engaging with our officers with the Waco Police Department. So, I look forward to growing as a leader in this city and appreciate the opportunity to share with you this afternoon. I'd also like to take this time to acknowledge our executive team who is here with me today for moral support, Assistant Chief Frank Gensch, Assistant Chief Robert Lanning, and Assistant Chief Mark Marcross. Our department, just as every other department in the city, is focused on moving this city forward together by doing our part to provide exemplary public safety services. Next slide. So, the presentation overview. This afternoon, I would like to take a few minutes to discuss the results of crime initiatives developed as a result of internal inquiries and concerns brought to our city council by our community regarding issues related to violent crime and gang activity and an increase in burglary of motor vehicles. I'll also discuss the adoption of relational policing as a culture for our agency and the fundamental philosophy of our neighborhood engagement team. I'll also share the proposed primary responsibilities of our neighborhood engagement team and provide an update and a timeline on its execution. I would then provide a summary of our patrol investigations and support operations and end with a few ideas and recommendations for assisting our response to mental health consumers. Next slide, please. So, before I start with the results of our first crime initiative, I'd just like to begin by discussing the crime that's most concerning for us all, and that's murder. To date, including an unfortunate domestic violence incident that occurred on yesterday, the City of Waco has had eight murders, one which is in front of grand jury now considered to be a self-defense, six arrests, two of those suspects, of the, two of the six suspects was from one murder. And we have very strong leads with a suspect on our university student who was killed. We also have an exceptional clearance on the murder-suicide, the unfortunate event that occurred last week on May the 26th, 2021. The last national average homicide clearance rate that we could locate was 62.3. Waco Police Department's rate for murder at the end of '22 was 78.6. And although we would love to end 2021 with no additional lives lost, we're still above the national average if this year ends where we are now with no bleed over from last year. So, our current violent crime initiative that we have ongoing is a result of a series of murders and gang-related violence that's been occurring across the city. Our first initiative started on April the 21st, 2021. The units involved in this crime initiative were our Career Criminal Apprehension and Supervision Team, our CCAS unit, Drug Enforcement Unit, the Department of Public Safety, Street Crimes, McClellan County Sheriff's Office, our two officers assigned to our gang unit, our traffic unit, and SWAT. And as a result of the scheduled initiatives, as you can see, we've had 46 arrests. 15 of those arrests were documented gang members or associated gang members. We recovered several weapons, 10 pistols, two rifles, two stolen vehicles, stolen AR-15, stolen .357 Magnum. We also used 735 hours in overtime, but we also had officers adjusting their shift to work these initiatives. So, one of the weapons that were recovered, one of the 10 pistols, a 9mm, was fired and tested and it matched, matched rounds in two Waco PD cases and an outside case. Our NIVAN, if you're not familiar with it, the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, it captures and compares ballistic evidence. And one of those weapons led to four cases that we're hoping to clear from that weapon that we located. The gun was located on a subject listed as a criminal gang member. When we begin this violent crime response, we did a comparison of the violent crime stats the month before and the month afterwards. The month prior, there were 53 aggravated assaults, deadly conducts, discharge of firearms, and murders that were not family-related. This combination of all of those. And the month, the month since beginning that strategy, that number has reduced to 33. Our combined tag unit, law enforcement partners, DEU, Street Crimes, and two gang officers have worked hard during this third quarter with numerous other gang-related arrests on serious offenders with violent backgrounds and in possessions of drugs and weapons. A couple of other notable arrests and follow-up investigations include the arrest of a felon making anti-government and extremist posts. And there was evidence that, that was recovered that suggested that this individual was capable of carrying out his threat. This evidence included educational materials and multiple shotguns, rifle, rifles, handguns, and ammo. We are currently working with ATF to get federal charges on this guy. Our US Marshals Task Force, we have a member on that task force, recently arrested the second suspect in one of our murder cases. And during this, during this encounter, three other documented gang members were arrested and four stolen weapons were recovered. Suspects have been identified in last week's deadly conduct incident involving two vehicles. Thus far, one arrest, which we're pursuing felony charges, federal charges on, has been made, and a second suspect has been identified and a warrant filed. Shell casings have been found and submitted into our NIVAN system, and the investigation is ongoing. As recent as this past Sunday evening, our patrol officers arrested two suspects in an aggravated, attempted aggravated robbery, carjacking, and an actual aggravated robbery that they did get away with, well, that they did perpetrate. But after receiving several calls of individuals jumping in people's backyards, our officers came to the scene. They set a parameter. One of these suspects was arrested within that parameter. The second suspect was arrested at a nearby pizzeria in the bathroom. He had bullets on him as well as the weapon, and so the weapon was recovered. So, unfortunately, both of these individuals were juveniles, and one had a previous arrest of stealing five cars. Moving on to our, thank you so much. Moving on to our burglary of a motor vehicle initiatives, this is an initiative that was conducted by using on-duty resources for our midnight officers. The complaint was that there were a series of BMVs and auto thefts occurring in Cedar Park, Oakwood, Cinderella Springs, China Spring, Kendrick Park, Baylor Off Campus Housing, and Alta Vista. These initiatives were scheduled to take place on May the 6th, May the 13th, May the 20th, and May the 27th. The initiative scheduled for May the 20th did not occur because of a staffing shortage. Again, I said, these were, we were going to use on-duty resources, but the 6th, 13th, and 27th did occur. So, the result, can you go back? Yeah. So, the result of our BMV initiatives, we had 35 field interviews, 11 traffic stops, nine suspicious vehicles, and five arrests. Now, there was reasonable suspicion in each one of these field interviews and suspicious vehicles. We didn't just go randomly select people to pull over. Either they were in the hotspot area in the middle of the night. We saw a couple of dome lights on in vehicles that was suspicious. Fortunately, in a couple of those incidents, we located the complainants and determined that there was an accident, but in one, we actually arrested a burglary of motor vehicle suspect. Go to the next slide. So, now I'd like to discuss with you a culture that I'd like to create within the City of Waco and the Waco Police Department. And it's a philosophy called relational policing. And relational policing is a philosophy focusing on the principles of creating genuine cooperative relationships between the police and citizens of Waco. Waco PD is committed to making every contact count by being, and these are the tenants of relational policing. Transparent, respectful, engaging, building emotional capital, accountable, being accountable, and earning the trust of the citizens that we serve. The tenants of relational policing spell out the words T-R-E-E-A-T, and the idea is that that transparency, respect, engagement, emotional capital, and accountability will help us to earn the trust of the citizens that we serve. Next slide, please. Our Neighborhood Engagement Team, the proposed mission of the team is to increase the number of positive interactions between police officers and the community using the tenants of relational policing. Relational policing, again, is a philosophy that's primarily focused on building genuine cooperative relationships in the performance of our police duties. In relational policing, every contact is an opportunity for us to build trust, whether it's interacting with a complainant, a reporting, a witness, or a suspect. Next slide, please. Our Neighborhood Engagement Team, the roles and responsibilities that are proposed are being a liaison between the community and the City of Waco resources, including serving as navigating partners to the community by connecting them with City of Waco government and non-governmental services, organizing, coordinating, and attending community and neighborhood association meetings, and working with the Office of Neighborhood Engagement, gathering crime stats, crime data, presenting that, that data, and working cooperatively with our communities in developing prevention responses using problem-oriented policing strategies and non-traditional innovative forms of problem-solving to impact crime, cause for service, safety issues, and quality of life issues within the City of Waco. They will also be responsible for organizing, coordinating, and attending department and City of Waco-sponsored activities such as National Night Out. One thing that I'm really excited for our Neighborhood Engagement Team to become a part of is to also support our Community Outreach Unit in activities involving our youth. I think that prevention and intervention are essential in addressing crime in our neighborhood and reducing the opportunity for our young people to become involved in criminal activity. One of the programs that we are introducing and we're working closely with Waco ISD with is the Teen in Police Service, the TAPS Academy. We're looking to begin our Police Activities League again. Our Citizens Police Academy, they will also be supporting our Junior Police Academy, and supporting Waco ISD in ongoing gang resistance education and training. They will also provide support to support, to patrol our Safe Unit and Investigative Units as needed. And since our Neighborhood Engagement Teams will be embedded in our communities and working closely with our neighborhoods, then they may receive information prior to anybody calling and reporting that information. So, they will work closely with our Patrol and Safe Unit and Investigative Units to address crime. We would develop innovative opportunities for community engagement. Like I said, we want to increase the number of positive interactions that we have with our community and kind of humanize our badge. And we will do this through local school activities, back-to-school events, holiday events, and public or student Police Week activities. You know, this week, this year COVID kind of shut us down with Police Week activities, but I'd love to have a parking lot full of kids with all of PD toys and walking around, you know, our police station and shaking hand with officers and getting to know what we, what we do. They would also develop partnerships and community, with community stakeholders to partner in neighborhood engagement activities, and of course, perform other duties, initiatives, and attend or participate in community and attend or participate in community service events as directed by their supervisors. So our neighborhood engagement team, the timelines. So according to the net timeline for becoming operational, um, although there's been a little delay in the completion of our office space, the unit is still on task to begin the selection process by September of two thousand and twenty-one and become operational by November the first, two thousand and twenty-one. These positions will be backfilled with recruits who are scheduled to complete the fill training program just before that time. Some of the characteristics that we'll be looking for during the selection process include a diverse group of sworn police officers with public speaking abilities, people-oriented, problem solvers, resourceful, excellent communicators, respected amongst their peers, demonstrate cultural competency and awareness, and engaging personality, good interpersonal skills, community outreach, and community engagement experiences, um, and the like. So I'd now like to give you an update of our organizational chart and a summary of our patrol investigations and support operations, and then end with a few ideas and recommendations for assisting our response with mental health, health consumers in reducing the number of calls that, um, and interactions that we have with our mental health population. Uh, this is the organizational chart, uh, as we, um, would like to implement on June the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. As you can see, we have a couple of executive, well, all of our executive team has, have been moved around, um, starting June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, Chief AC Lanning will be responsible for our patrol operations, Chief Ginch will be responsible for, responsible for investigations, and Chief Norcross will be responsible for support services. A couple of other things that we did with the organizational chart, um, we had a couple of, a couple of commander moves because of an upcoming promotion. Uh, C-CAS unit has been moved to investigations. Uh, we had a commander added to investigations to, um, uh, supervise our special investigative unit, uh, which previously reported to an assistant chief, and now that, that unit will report to, um, a commander for more oversight. Um, special events will now be handled by our Patrol Administration Office, and they will report directly to an AC. Um, our safe unit and net unit will become a part of our support services in our Community Service Division and work closely with our newly developed neighborhood engagement team. Next slide, please. So as we all know, uh, and you guys more so than I, the city of Waco and the metropolitan area has grown significantly, significantly over the past several, several years. Uh, the number of visitors have increased by one point five million since two thousand and thirteen. Uh, from our research, you know, we have regularly occurring events across this city. Uh, with things opening up, I imagine that we will, uh, be out more and more events will come to our city. Um, however, the city of Waco Patrol, um, division has increased by nine officers two thousand and ten, and we certainly appreciate the officers given to us at two times from approved by our, our city council. Uh, next slide, please. Just to give you just a, a picture of, um, our patrol shifts, we have two different platoons, platoon A and platoon B, they're separated by days off, um, and being able to have weekends off, so that's the A and B designation. Um, but then we have days, evenings, and night shift. Each one of those platoons has a, uh, day shift, evening shift, and night shift. If you notice that we have two shifts on day shift, that's to cover the overlap from night shift once midnights get off work, and evening shift works from three to one, and midnight works from nine PM to seven PM. Next slide, please. So, we operate, um, in what we call minimal staffing. Um, and minimal staffing is the deployment of sufficient number of patrol officers at any one time to maintain officer safety and provide an adequate level of protection to the public. Police departments, um, we should not be operating on, uh, minimal staffing on a regular basis, and if you look at the, the numbers that we have here, uh, day shift, uh, minimal staffing is sixteen, and that's because we have the extra officer for the public improvement district. Evening shift, uh, Sunday through Thursday, operate with fifteen officers at minimal staffing, and then Friday and Saturday that increases to eighteen, and then midnight, again, fifteen, um, Monday through Thursday, with Friday, Saturday having eighteen officers. Now Thursdays, we have an overlap because everyone is at work, and we use those days for training days to meet, to meet our TCO certifications. Um, and also, there is also an overlap between nine and one. Uh, you see, we'll have evening shift and midnight shifts on duty at the same time. Next slide, please. There are some things, though, that, um, kind of hinders our response, um, when, uh, we're out on patrol and working at minimal staffing. So there are several calls that require us to respond with a two-man, two-person unit. Uh, and those calls includes all, all of our in-progress calls, robbery in progress, shooting in progress, uh, burglary in progress calls, and in-progress calls just means that a reasonable possibility exists that the offender is still on the scene, that there may be a recurrence of an incident, or, and there's element of danger to persons or officers that still exists. Uh, we require two officers to respond to calls that alcoholics establishment, um, for obvious reasons. Uh, there's music, I mean, uh, alcohol, there's probably loud music as well, and for situational awareness and officer safety and public safety, we need to make sure we have two officers responding to those calls, and also to control the situation with a minimal risk of injury to both our citizens and our officers, and we, um, require multiple officers when backup is requested. But it's also a need for other officers, um, in incidents where, uh, maybe we have to shut down a freeway, and for officer safety reasons, we have to have more units on the scene, or if we have a scene where we have a crowd and, um, need officers there for crowd control or blocking off streets to maintain, um, our scenes. Next slide, please. So this is just a police map of our districts. We have three police districts that we operate, District One, District Two, and District Three, um, and there are fifteen beats within each one of those units. Now, some beats are larger than others, there are five beats in each district, and of course, the call volumes, as you, as you will see in the next slide, is much higher within the city, in that circumference of the city, uh, in the beats which, uh, than those that extend further. However, the population is growing in those areas, we can anticipate call volumes increasing as well. Everybody knows that we cover a hundred square mile area, and as a chief in a sprawling ci- city, I have to balance a lot of different concerns, police visibility, product policing, public safety, officer safety, and of course, earning the trust of our community. So we're working with our city management team through the budget process to determine our needed resources. Um, the next slide, again, is just a slide of the number of calls that we have received since January the first, we're between January the first and May the twenty-fifth. Um, and this just gives you an idea of where all, most of our calls are. Again, if we're working at minimal staffing and we have fifteen beats, that means that when we have a call that requires multiple officers, there is a beat that's not covered. Um, so, this, this happens frequently, uh, during the night, um, and then, as you can see, we've extended further, uh, and as population grows in those areas that were not heavily populated once before, we'll get more calls to those areas. So, as you can see, we've had a total of thirty-six thousand five hundred and seventeen calls since, um, January the first, two thousand and eighty-two of those calls were, uh, listed as violent calls, with thirty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-five listed as nonviolent. Also, I would like to give you a snapshot of the number of cases that we have received since January the first. This is not indicative of the number of cases our investigators, investigators are currently holding or have closed or require long-term investigation, and we're grateful to counsel again, uh, my understanding is that we received two detectives for our investigative units to boost up our special crimes and our family violence division. Um, so this is just a staff shot of the number of cases that we received since January, and the number of detectives assigned, detectives and sergeants assigned to those units. So we have an amazing support staff of just less than a hundred personnel who are instrumental to our day-to-day operations. Waco PD is ahead of the game in civilianizing its workforce and using non-sworn personnel to perform tasks so that sworn, sworn, sworn officers can be used for other functions that can only be performed by sworn personnel. For example, uh, our crime scene techs are civilians, and they do a phenomenal job, and they help us with a lot of community policing stuff too. Uh, we had them in, uh, at Career Day at University High a couple of weeks ago, and they're excited to be out there, and so we're really, really appreciative of our support staff. Again, uh, as far as our sworn staff is concerned, we're working with our city management and the, the budget process to determine, uh, our requests and our resource needs. Uh, we are also, we have located a higher, um, COPS hiring grant with the US Department of Justice, and we'll be seeking approval to apply for, uh, that grant during the next, next session. So our response to mental health, Prosper Waco, um, I'm sorry, Waco Connect, we'll be working with Waco Connect in order to, um, uh, add a social worker to our C-CAS unit to assist us and connect us with city resources. Um, we just felt the, our C-CAS unit is tasked with identifying those individuals that we come across frequently, and what we found is that most of those individuals have, are our consumers or have mental health needs, and so we believe that partnering, partnering with Waco Connect, uh, and having, using their resources, we can reduce the number of calls that we receive from these individuals, um, and, uh, provide them with resources that they would need, um, to, uh, better, uh, contribute to, to society. Um, I would also like to see, and this is just a recommendation, uh, coming from Houston, we had a homeless outreach team, and our homeless outreach team, um, were bicycle units, they also had a trash, transport unit, and they engaged in street outreach with chronically, with the chronically homeless, homeless, with a focus on finding individual solutions to address the needs of that population, uh, with the goal of getting them off the street and reducing the number of nuisance calls related to that population. Um, I think it will also be ideal, I would love to see a social worker, uh, at our public information desk or in our dispatch unit, and some of the calls that would come in that, that would, uh, prevent us from even having to respond to a scene, uh, because they may be able to handle the, the call on, you know, via dispatcher over the phone. Um, that will we be required to still make some calls? Absolutely, but a, a lot of times, uh, they can be just redirected, or they'll be able to find the resources, or sometimes people just need somebody to talk to, um, and that person won't know how to handle that call, know how to handle that, that call, that population. So, that concludes my, uh, presentation. Uh, if anyone has any questions?
I think we all do.
I'll start, I'll start. This is Holmes over here. Thank you, Chief Victorian, thank you so much for the presentation. I know you've kind of had a weird dynamic here, being new in town, you've made yourself available to a lot of different people, and I appreciate you so much. You've been welcomed here with open arms, and we appreciate your, you coming to Waco. And I don't say you make, I wasn't expecting this thorough of, uh, of a, of a presentation, because I know you've been doing all these other, uh, all these other things, and you're great, I appreciate it. Um, um, just my notes as I've gone through here, uh, I appreciate the flexibility of, because I know in my district, five, we've had these auto theft, uh, issues, and the initiative, or the, the special initiative you put behind that, I think it was helpful. I mean, we saw the slide in there about how we saw good results, uh, when we showed, we showed a little bit of police presence there. The, uh, I like what you said about humanizing the badge, you know, I think that's a, it's a, it's a great, uh, direction to go here for, for our police department. The org charts, I thought was great, I'm, I'm not sure I've, I've seen that before, but, uh, very good. Um, patrol coverage and the district and beat map, those, those are, were interesting. Um, and, and again, in District Five, which is basically the western parts, the lake parts that I represent, you, you don't see a lot of dots on that one, and I just, I just want to make sure we keep it, you know, as much as we can do to keep it that way, and a lot of it, uh, the, uh, citizen concerns I get in my district are just having a presence out there, having some regular patrol out there, not, you know, uh, uh, more just knowing that, uh, there's going to be patrol coming around at, at any given time, and, and that's important to, to, to those districts to me, because I would like, again, like to keep crime, you know, minimized in, in those districts, keep it where it is. Um, and how we do that, and I don't know if that's more people and with, or more patrol officers or how to, because it already seems like we're sort of stretched when you're showing sixteen, seventeen, eighteen at any given time, right? Uh, so, I, I don't know, and again, I don't know the answers to that, we'll be looking for some guidance from you as we, as we, uh, as we look into how we operate the police force. I like the direction you're going to on the mental health part, and the resources we can find there about adding the social worker to, to the, the team, kind of, because to me, once you get to, uh, the scene, uh, the policeman, uh, can, once he stabilizes the situation, and he, and then can be freed up to do, to get back on patrol, I think the faster we can do that and faster we can turn that around, in cases where there's a mental health issue, I think, uh, makes a lot of sense. I like the direction you're going on that, but it all looks good. Again, early on, I appreciate everything you're doing, and I don't see how you're doing all this, because I see you at every luncheon, every night, you're doing something, and again, I appreciate you being part of Waco and, uh, welcome you with open arms here.
Thank you very much, sir.
Chief, thanks for a great presentation. I have been so excited to hear from you, uh, particularly about relational policing. It's something that the previous council had committed to and prioritized money, and I think, uh, what I heard from constituents is a lot of, um, reservations and hesitations coming out of two thousand and twenty, of what is this going to look like? How do we really establish trust? Um, how do we make sure that our communities of color and all of those intersections recognize the complexities that exist there for our residents that are undocumented, or that are primarily Spanish-speaking, for our black youth? Uh, there's just, there's a lot going on there, so I'm excited to hear, even just this change in language from community policing to relational policing, I think having different verbiage in our community will be helpful in establishing, um, what it is that we're wanting to do going forward. I'm curious if, um, you or your executive team, uh, would consider hosting town halls, um, along relational policing lines to hear from, um, some more community leaders and community members about what they would really like to see, what sorts of things would build that trust, what sorts of, what are some maybe barriers or resistance, um, that you and your team could address that would help, um, just smoothen out that process? I heard previously under, um, community policing in a previous inter- iteration, there were officers on bikes, and that was something that I've heard interest in seeing brought back in, so whether that's through a homeless outreach team or just through the relational policing in general, um, that is a piece that I've heard intrigue about. I'm also curious what best practices look like for relational policing from other communities in terms of, uh, is it best when officers are on foot for X percentage of the time, or bikes? Um, is there, are, are folks more receptive when officers are in uniform, when they're armed, when they're unarmed, um, when they live in the region or the neighborhood? Just some of those different nuances of how that's all broken out. Uh, I live, or the district that I represent is really close to the Herring, uh, police station, and so I'd love to see ways that even that space could be hospitable to the neighbors. Dean Highland is there, uh, and they have a really active neighborhood association group, which I'm sure you've heard from, but would love to figure out what are some of those, um, informal contexts, whether it's a basketball hoop that officers could use and the neighborhood could use, um, having popsicles in the summer, uh, just bringing connections there. Um, along DOJ lines, our community's gotten a lot of DOJ money over the years, so I think that's, that, that feels like a promising piece for the, um, COPS hiring grant. For the neighborhood engagement team, I'm a licensed master social worker, so I love this idea of bringing more social workers onto, uh, public safety. Are we considering adding civilian roles to that department, whether it's a, someone with a PR background, or an organizer, or a social worker that can do some of that liaising with the community that isn't a law enforcement officer?
That's a great question. We already have civilians in our community outreach unit, and they do a phenomenal job, um, leading our Citizens Police Academy, helping out with our Junior Police Academy, so we do already have civilians there supporting us, and they do a great job.
Do you anticipate if we add, uh, officers to the neighborhood engagement team, that we would, uh, have a need to add more civilians in that role as well, or primarily just, uh, law enforcement?
Um, it, it may be likely that we will need support personnel as well, um, and if we see that that's the case, again, we'll, um, after we have an assessment of what, what we need, and maybe come back the next budget year, and get with our supervisors and request and say, hey, this is working, and this is what we need, so.
Awesome. Okay, I think my last, um, trying to read through all of my notes, uh, just wanted, again, to reiterate the idea of having the homeless outreach team, I think could be really helpful, um, and connecting with our Heart of Texas, um, Homeless Coalition, they're a really strong group of professionals from a variety of industries, and love the idea of having a social worker or a few social workers that idea of having a social worker, or a few social workers that can do some of that triaging at the public information desk.
Chief Victorian, thank you so much for the presentation this afternoon. I, when do you sleep? I have to say with Jim, you know, I've seen you at pastors' luncheons, neighborhood association meetings, other speaking engagements, and I'm just thinking, how do you do it all? But, but in all seriousness, I first of all want to say thank you for bringing to light, and really talking about the violent crimes that we have been experiencing in our city. The crimes that people are losing their lives, I mean, these are our sons and daughters that are losing their lives over nonsense. And, and it's very sad to see that happening in our city. And I know it's been an increase of, of those violent crimes taking place in our city, and I know you addressed a little bit about, you know, how really we're combating that. But I would, I would be curious to see maybe some of the things that you have seen in Houston? You know, I know you, you were at Houston many years, to see maybe how we can also address, or try to prevent those violent crimes and murders from increasing in our city.
That's a great question, and I got a question from you a little earlier about our youth being involved in a lot of these violent crime incidents.
Yes, ma'am.
And just so happened, this past week, Sunday as a matter of fact, I met the director of Chi Elwali, he's at our alternative school, and he expressed an interest of, because that's where we need to be. Like I said, prevention and intervention, I think is key, and we need to make sure, and not just, it's not just, it's not just our responsibility. There are some other resources around the city, and people that are more than willing to come out and help support our youth, to guide them and steer them in the right direction. Him, I met a gentleman at the Neighborhood Association Altivista this past week, who has a program, invited us as officers to come out and engage with these, with at-risk youth. So there are plenty of resources that we have out to, but we just have to make sure our kids know about it.
Right.
And we have to make sure that they get into those programs. But, and it's not just that, it's the parents. I haven't yet, but I know some, I know it exists. Somebody's out there who's willing to sit down with the parent group, or, you know, give them some ideas on what to look for, their kids are involved in certain behaviors. So, I'd love to see that, I'd love to partner. I learned a long time ago, I can't arrest my way out of everything. So, prevention and intervention is extremely important to me.
Well, and, and one of the things that you alluded to, and that you spoke about, and I think Waco is very strong at, is community effort. And in order for community policing to work, it's going to take a community effort, that it's not just Waco PD's sole responsibility, but it takes all of us, a consorted effort on all of our behavits, and nonprofits, and parents, and schools, et cetera, of how we can make our cities safer for our children. Because I think that's, and I'm sure with a lot of our council, my council members, that weighs heavy on a lot, how do we make our cities safer for our children, which is very important. You showed the slide of the number of officers you have during patrol, but on there you put minimal staffing. What would be ideal staffing for you?
So, there are a lot of variation, a lot of things that we need to consider before making a final determination of numbers, and that's what I've been talking to our city manager, our assistant city manager about, and using data, data to come up with an ideal number to make sure that our city is covered, and to make sure that we are operating in a safe, a place that's safe for our citizens and our police officers. But there is, yes.
I would be curious to hear your thoughts, once you and city manager Ford, or assistant city manager hold, talk about that, because I think as we begin to look for the growth that Waco has experienced, and it continues to experience, and hopefully will continue to experience, I think it's important that that's reflective in our public safety sector. And so, I would be curious to hear your thoughts on that, once you guys had that discussion.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you for incorporating your mental health, mental health component. We know that this is something that we have only touched the surface on, but as we begin to move forward with our programs and services, I would like, and would make a request, and a plea also to you, that those services make sure that we're offered in Spanish, because we have a lot of community members where Spanish is their dominant language. And when you're dealing with such sensitive matters as mental health, it's only more comforting when you can speak to someone in the language that you understand, or that you know best. And so I would make that request. And then, I also like the idea of the homeless outreach team. I think that would be something, not only for our entire, great for our entire city, but also in the downtown area, where we could maybe use that as a test spot, you know, or something of that sort, because I think while we want to make sure that everyone is welcoming to Waco, we want to make sure also that, that our city is doing everything that it can for all of its citizens, and tourists, and constituents, and residents. And so, I would dare to say, let's try, once we're to that point of really launching the homeless outreach team, I would also request that maybe we can try in the downtown area first to see how it goes. But other than that, thank you so much for your presentation, and make sure you get some rest in the next coming weeks.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Chief, I've joined my fellow council members in applauding not only your presentation, but your efforts here in the last two months, and so we're grateful for your leadership, and, and all of these exciting new initiatives. I know, I think your stress on relational policing is, is the right place to be in this, in our environment, and I think your focus on prevention and intervention, as opposed to apprehension, is, is key. And I, you know, I think most of us understand that, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth so much more than a pound of cure. And, you know, I share Mayor Protem's interest in determining what is the right amount of patrol cars that we've got, but that also we can afford within the budget, and that's always a difficult conversation to have, but also interested in that. And I thank you for your focus on mental health, and I look forward to that being developed, and I know you can't meet with every single community leader constantly and regularly, but I do think that there are some good things happening with the Prosper Waco Behavioral Leadership Team, happening here at MHMR, we've got a relatively new executive director, we've got a crisis hub coming online pretty soon. And so I think there's a lot of positive movement with mental health and behavioral health here in Waco McLennan County, and I think that you are the right person to, to represent a large deal of our law enforcement here in moving that ball forward. So I thank you for those focuses, and I share comments that have been expressed by my fellow council members. But also, as a final comment, thank you for the burglar of a motor vehicle focus. I know I've heard a lot from my constituents on that, as well as Councilmember Holmes, and I appreciate y'all making some, having some success with, with that initiative. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chief Victorian. I have written copious notes that have been crossed out because they've been mentioned already, but I will echo the fact that in 60 days, you've probably seen more events than we have. So I recommend that you change your theme song to Award Tour by a Tribe Called Quest, because you've got your mic in your hand, and you are moving. We've got a lot of, there are a lot of wonderful things that you've brought to our attention in this presentation, so I thank you for that. I do have some questions. On the neighborhood engagement team slide, there is a mention of, of POP strategies. Can you talk to me a little bit about more, the abbreviated version of what that does?
Problem-oriented policing. So if our neighborhood engagement teams are in our communities, and we identify issues that people may not ordinarily call the police out about every day, or nuisance issues, then we engage the community in developing a strategy to address those issues.
Teaching people to fish.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, I like that, that's helpful. I am a huge fan of Neighborhood Night Out. The Main Street manager in me is Main Street all day, and anytime, anytime that you can engage a community around a tricked-out police car, and the, you know, it's fantastic. Allowing the children, I mean, sure, pre-COVID, crawling in and out of those, you know, it's a thing, and it, it's visual, and it's an opportunity to, to connect, right? I am, I am the strongest believer that children can only be what they see. That includes policing. And so, those types of events, getting engaged with the schools, that leads me to, you said TAPS, and I wanted to know more about what that does. I mean, in all of this, I can be happy to hear about it in an email if it is too, too detailed to, to, to speak on right now, but I think that the community outreach unit, any auxiliary that you all have, you know, we need to figure out how to make that more well-known. Because I don't know that it does us any service to have all these wonderful activities and, and groups, and no one knows about them. You know, I mean, as the kid who grew up watching 80's films, I mean, Police Academy is a fan favorite for me. However, it is not like that, because my husband went through the Citizens Police Academy, and he was amazed by it, and things he would have never known about how policing actually worked, you know, were revealed in his tenure in that program. So that's something that we've just got to do better about promoting. And, you know, however we can help with that, you know, I think are important. But like, anything, any program that is community-supported, that deals with our teens, that deals with our babies, that gets you in a school building, that gets you at a, a youth organization that is done by X and such over here, that's something we need to be in, because again, children can only be what they see. And I think that we have been in conversation, some of the local elected officials, not necessarily all council, but from the county, and the city, and the ISDs, about what that looks like, because we are under attack, it feels. I, I, you know, when you're in a, I lived in, you know, you're, you are a native Houstonian. I lived there 14 years, we are now celebrated Wacoans, because home is where our stuff is. But, you know, you look at the numbers, and it's, it's a speck in comparison to what you saw in Houston. However, everybody that is attached to a murder is someone's child, it's someone's sibling, it's someone's cousin, and those are, in a community as small as ours, we're all connected. And so, it, it feels, whether you knew them or not, you know somebody who did.
Right.
You know, somebody whose lives were affected because they were slain. And we have got to find a way to, to get to a solution, to bring safety into our little hamlet. You know, again, Waco is a absolutely wonderfully growing city. What is it, Bradley, we're the, or no Dylan, Mayor, the smallest member of the varsity team? You know, we're, we're playing in, in, in real things. You can't say that Waco has come, you know, the first city in the state of Texas to reach pre-COVID employment numbers, and boast of those types of accomplishments, yet we're burying high school football players from dice games. And, and so, I think it's, it is important for us to do all we can, and I appreciate the fact that our city management, along with council, while adhering to our stewardship responsibilities, and our fiscal responsibilities to our budget, are willing to take a look at out-of-the-box thinking, and the thoughts that we may not have had experience or exposure to before. And I appreciate that innovation that you bring. Mayor Protem Sabido asked about staffing, and I had written down, okay, we do minimal staffing, what is optimal staffing? What does that look like? And again, the answer may not be, we may not have a better answer for you, depends on how the budget shakes out. But what we can do is look at it.
Sure.
And look at how we're doing the things. I am all about applying for Fed money, thank you for going to the DOJ, press, press, press. You know, I think that's how we got tag money and all that business, and, and those are organizations and partnerships that we're working that will, again, help us bring this down. I mean, who knew? You know, Waco has the US Marshals, the FBI, all of that right here, and we're using them together. So I think that those are the only ways that we are going to, to, to bring, bring some solutions to this. One of the slides mentioned the numbers of violent crime calls, and I want to know what that means exactly. Is that where some, someone was put?
So, violent crime includes assaults, robbery, pretty much crimes against persons.
Okay, okay.
It happened against a person, they were violated, they were assaulted, they were robbed, those are the violent crimes.
And.
Of course murder.
I am considering the 100 miles you say we cut, at least.
100 square miles.
Uh huh. And I'm looking at, at, in the positions where these numbers are, with the intensity, even though there are but 2,082 of them in five months, you know, they're core. So how, how, how we do, what we can do, when that at least takes two officers, for officer safety. But just the sheer number of it. I mean, and I'm looking at my district specifically, but I'm also looking at four, you know, and I'm looking at two. And that's a lot. So, you know, I have some concerns on that, but again, we're going to reach out to as many opportunities and options as we can, how we link our partnerships, even with our tag groups, are they, how do they help with that? And these are, you know, if, if at any point you find a question, or there's an answer in my ramblings, please just say so. But the mention, the homeless outreach team, I think is great. I want, I did write down, how does that align with our homeless coalition? You know, what does that partnership look like, in that we're not stepping on each, on each other's toes, but more working harmoniously together? The, Councilmember Palmer mentioned relational policing stats. I, I was on a, some kind of webinar, and I got the, and this was even before you came to us, Chief Victorian, Houston's Relational Policing Bible, I guess. And as we were beginning to, to look at what, what that would feel like for our city, and I have a copy if, if you want it, that's but one city to look at, you know, considering the others, and if, if you have recommendations of programs in different cities that, you know, you would like to share with us, about how they do those things, and what that looks like, I think that would be helpful for us. So, and to end all of that, we've got a lot of work to do, and it's a lot of work that is all of our responsibilities. You mentioned from the parent to, you know, the officers, to the leadership, and we've all, but we've all got to figure out how to start singing in the same hymnal. And I think that the one thing that we will do is, if any of this is just making our intentions transparent, making our work clear, making our asks clear. You know, I think that, I've, I've always thought that the reason we started, even started talking about this, is I was like, if we don't see you, if I don't know you, I don't have, I don't have any responsibility to you, I don't have any trust to you, from you, for you, there's no relationship. You know, I think it's time for us to get, you know, don't ask me, because I'm going to say it all. You know, I like the idea of substations. I don't know if we can afford it, but I like it. I think we've had it before, and I think that, you know, there has, there, there, there may be a way. You know, that's, it was a federal grant before, I believe? Is that right, historically?
I'm running.
That, that works for me. That, that works for me. Um, so I think that those are things that we look at and look for because I think if we have, because we've got hard problem areas. You know, hard ones. I got sent a video of a fight off of J.J. Flewellen and these girls were fighting each other with hammers. That's got to stop. Got to stop. And it's not, no, you can't arrest your way out of everything, but we can, we can provide resources. We can engage in a manner that, you know, alternatives are available. And those are the things that will make us the city we need to be, that we're destined to be. But it's going to take some creative thinking and out-of-the-box thinking. And, um, I'm grateful for you, Chief Victorian, your leadership staff and their commitment to, their, eh, their commitment and tenure to this. But it's going to take us all.
Very well said by all council members. Um, Chief Victorian, thank you so much for this presentation. Again, welcome. Um, and, uh, thank you for the other members of our police department here today. Um, I thank you for all of your service. Um, noble police officers who sacr- sacrificially put their life on the line for us every day. Um, our city is indebted to you. So thank you just out of the gate for your sacrificial service of risking your life, um, for our community. Um, those noble officers, um, who are doing the good work, we're thankful. Um, great presentation and great questions and comments from our council members. Um, I really appreciate the update on relational policing, mental health and responding to homelessness. Um, I look forward to seeing all of these initiatives take off. And, uh, Bradley, I'd love you to work with the chief to make sure that each council member's, um, questions that might need further gathering, we, we can get back to the council members on that. I know, I know we will. Couple of the highlights that got brought up that I'll just kind of echo, um, was looking at the statistics and data of how we're going to measure this, um, as we, as we move forward. Um, and then also ensuring that we're really being strategic in our communication and promotional strategies for all of the things that we're doing. Working collaboratively with other organizations. I know we do these things well, so this isn't things I'm saying we need to start doing or, or we're not doing at all, but just want to emphasize the importance of these things as I see them and, and also taking advantage of those grants. So those are a couple of the things that, that I heard that just want to echo that. Um, complex problems require complex solutions. And the message that I want to send to people in this community who are in the practice of committing violent crimes, who are thinking of starting committing violent crimes, um, I want this to be a notice to them that Waco is not going to tolerate violent crime and that we are going to work to build a safe city. Um, I personally will do everything I can to work with this police department, our police officers, as well as nonprofits, churches, social workers and other community members to ensure that Waco is renowned for being a safe city. And I loved what you said, chief. You can't arrest your way out of everything. Prevention and intervention are important, but also ensuring that we have the resources to respond to those violent offenders and that they know that it will not be tolerated here, I believe is also important. And so I look forward to entering into this budget season and hearing what you need, chief, um, and what strategies and creativity and innovation, um, that we can implement to make sure that our city is renowned as a safe city, to make sure that every citizen living in, on any block in Waco feels that they are safe, that every person thinking about engaging in a violent criminal activity knows that that is not tolerated in this community and that we are bu- addressing these problems, these complicated, complex problems holistically, um, with the creativity that your expertise can help guide and navigate us towards. Um, so I think what, what I'm excited about in this moment though is I think the time is now. Waco is a great city with a great future. The time is now to address these issues. The team is this. I believe we have got a great council and a great, uh, police chief and a great police department. We have a great community willing to partner collaboratively and strategically together to look at these hard issues rightly, um, holistically, creatively, innovatively. So in the midst of an exciting time in Waco, there are these challenges, I think as Andrea, um, said, uh, there are hard problems. Um, I believe this is the team that can solve those problems. And I, I mean, this and our city outside these four walls. So we're excited to partner with you and move forward, um, to be the city that we're destined to be, to be the city that is renowned as a safe city. Um, so thank you for what you do and I'm excited about, um, our forward momentum and partnership with you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Great presentation.
Thanks, chief. All right. Next up, Mayor and Council, we have Clint Peters joining us, our Director of Development Services for Work Session 2021 326, which is a discussion of the Impact Fee webpage and online calendar. Today actually marks the first, uh, day, effective date of the Impact Fee Ordinance, which was adopted by the council in November. Uh, Clint and the consultants from Freezing Nichols will be diving deep on the, the resources available placed online, uh, as well as walking you through the, the calculator. Clint?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, as Bradley mentioned, this is an overview and then a, a demonstration, an overview of our webpage and then a demonstration of the calculator, uh, that, uh, staff and our consultants, Freezing Nichols, have put together. Uh, and, and when council adopted the impact fees back in November, uh, the, the council did charge staff with to come up with a, a resource for, uh, developers to be able to go get the information about the impact fees and then a, a simple, uh, way to calculate those, um, fees. Um, as you remember, we, we, um, put together a fee structure that fit well with Waco. And so there's a lot of exemptions, reductions based on goals of, uh, having development, uh, in the core of the city. And then there was a phase approach. So all that's built into the calculator, uh, that we'll go over. Uh, we have been working with the developers group over the past three months to make sure that, uh, we captured all the information they wanted on the, the webpage and that the, the calculator was, uh, easy for them to use and, and we've received positive, uh, input from that. And so here's just a, a screenshot of the, uh, the webpage that we came up with. This has been, uh, live, uh, for a little over two weeks. Uh, this is on the planning page. Uh, and it's got a, a lot of information on there. Uh, you can see that, that top paragraph, uh, just gives a, an explanation of what the impact fees are. Uh, they are intended to assure adequate public facilities to serve new development in the city by, by requiring each such development to pay a share of the cost of new infrastructure needed, uh, created by the development, needs created by the development. And then it gets some more information about, uh, credits that can be applied, uh, based on, uh, new infrastructure that's put in, that's on the, the capital improvement plans adopted by the city council. Uh, and there's also a link, uh, to the ordinance there at the top paragraph. Uh, and then if you look, uh, down below, there's, uh, information on our roadway impact fees because we do have the roadway, water and wastewater. So there's information on roadway impact fees, uh, based on the projected traffic generation, uh, land use type and the service areas, which we have 11 in Waco, uh, as required by, uh, state law. Uh, uh, roadway service areas can only be, uh, six miles in width. So we had to, uh, break up our city limits into 11 different, uh, service areas. And you can see, uh, there's a link to the map up, uh, uh, top right that shows all the service areas. And then the, uh, the, um, uh, tables for the, the roadway impact fees. Uh, I didn't show the water and wastewater table or, or the, um, service areas because , uh, water and, and waste are a little bit simpler. It's just based on meter sizes and there's just one service area, which is of all the city limits and all the ETJ. So it's just one map that shows all that area. Uh, state law does allow us to, to charge water and wastewater fees in the ETJ where roadway impact fees are only within the city limits. Uh, and then at the bottom of that, you'll see a, uh, a phasing schedule. This, this, uh, ordinance, um, was adopted, is phased in over time. So if you have a, a developer has a preliminary plat approved, uh, before the effective, or before November 15th, which was the adoption date of the ordinance, uh, impact fees can be collected in a phase approach over a five-year period. So, uh, June, uh, 2021, starting today, uh, 20% for a year and then it, and then it slides down to 100%, um, which will be fully implemented in June of 2025. And then, uh, another, um, exemption is for final plats, um, that are approved. And so these are for phases that are actually either under construction or that have been recently approved by council that will start construction soon. As of June 1st, there's a two-year window, uh, where they can pull a building permit with a zero fee for those two years. Uh, the state law does require that to be one year and then, uh, uh, council, uh, with recommendations from staff and advisory committee extended that for another two years. Uh, and then you can see more information on there. There's a, a link to Impact Fee Ordinance Guide. Uh, this is an outline that talks about all the, the phasing exemptions, uh, reductions in there. And there, there's quite a few. I just wanted to, uh, just review some of those. So we do have a, a single-family, um, core area that's exempted from the fees, again, to encourage infill development. And so there's a, a ma- a link to a map there. There's also a reduction, uh, for commercial development in the, uh, transi- transitional commercial corridors. And th- those are like, uh, LaSalle Avenue, 25th Street, 18th, 17th, uh, some of those main, uh, uh, corridors. And then the core of the city gets their impact fees reduced by 50%. Uh, there is a, a exemption for residential, uh, development that's already 80% built out, that the, the remaining 20% would not have to pay impact fees. A change of use that doesn't increase the impact on the infrastructure is exempted. We have a affordable housing exemption, uh, that has some qualifiers on there, but if it meets those qualifiers, affordable housing is exempted. Uh, we do also have a existing business exemption, uh, that's either expanding or relocating within the city limits. There's some criteria they have to meet, but they're exempted. Uh, schools are exempted, exempted, fire suppression systems. Uh, and then we have some exemptions for, uh, industrial uses for the roadway, uh, part of the fees. And then for any developments, um, whose water and wastewater impact fees exceed, exceed 75%, the roadway fee is exempted. So there, there's a lot there. Um, and, uh, Freezing Nichols put all this, all the phasing and the exemptions into a calculator so a, a developer can, uh, easily in- enter their information in, into that calculator and it will provide, uh, what the impact fee is. So, um, we do have Eddie Haas and then Johnny Sullivan with Freezing Nichols and they're going to go through a couple of demonstrations of some different developments, uh, with the calculator. And so we're going to turn it over to them to do that demonstration.
Okay, ve- very good, Clint. Thanks very much. Uh, Eddie Haas here with Freezing Nichols. Uh, I led the development of the roadway impact fee component. Uh, Johnny Sullivan supported Jessica Vassar, um, in the water and wastewater component, uh, for the program. And, and Clint's right, we've, we've put this thing together into this cost calculation worksheet, which we hope is pretty self-intuitive, um, with, with really a series of pulled-down menus and things. And I guess one thing is really important to note, you know, this is aimed at the development community so they get an idea of what the impact fee is going to be. Sure, there's going to be some unique cases or land uses that may come up, but bottom line is it's aimed at helping them in figuring out, okay, what might my impact fee be if I come into Waco, north, south, west, east, wherever, whatever part of Waco coming into. But the, the critical thing is, is that the calculation will be done by staff. And so what this, what this sheet does, this identifies for the, for the applicant, hey, here's the assessment. This is the maximum allowable. And then in the lower right, the, and we'll walk through this here in a second, shows what, what is actually going to be collected. So the, it, it's aimed at showing what the real cost is to the community and then versus what the actual impact fee is going to be. The other really important thing is, is that the, the cost calculator, because any number of land uses can come up, but it's based on a, on an individual lot. So if, if you have a residential development coming in and say it's 100 dwelling units, you know, the impact fee is going to be on a per-lot basis. Even though they're doing 100 dwelling units, the, the actual impact fee is based on the per-lot. So that's an important distinction there so that, um, you don't get this multi-quadruple phase development and the thinking is, oh, well, that's all one lot. Uh, it's on individual lots as they're platted, that's where the, the fee, the impact fee is actually hit. So Johnny, I'm going to turn it over to you to, to share your screen, uh, and we'll walk through this. Um, hopefully you have a, are you there, Johnny, with the screen?
Yeah, I am. I'm sharing it now.
Okay, very good.
Okay, can everybody see it?
Okay, fire away, Johnny.
Cool. Good afternoon. Thank you very much, Clint. Uh, so just to walk you through this, at the top, we have some just general information that the applicant will enter about the development itself. And then they'll put in the date. Uh, that's very important because as was mentioned, the impact fees do scale, uh, based on that date. Then they'll enter, like Eddie said, with the, just a simple dropdown menu, whether it's in the city limits or the ETJ. For this example, we'll keep it in the city limits. And then similarly, they'll select the roadway service area. So we'll start with roadway service area one here.
Now, no, sorry, Johnny. There, there is a tab on the cost calculator. If you could show the, the service area map of the tab there. So developer can come in, he can, you know, water and wastewater is one service area, but when, when it comes to roads, and this, this green image is a little, little fuzzy, but it's a little clearer on the, on the website. But this is aimed at helping them locate where the different roadway service areas are. Sorry, Johnny, go ahead.
No worries. Thanks. Uh, so then we get into some qualifications like Clint talked about. And these are built into the calculations here. So for this example, we're going to start with the preliminary or final plat, having been submitted prior to November 3rd, 2020. And, because that's what allows for the impact fee to be scaled. But then just as an example, you can say yes to one of these and up pops the information that if you have a, you qualify for an existing or relocating business exemption, no impact fee is collected. I'm going to switch that back just for example. Um, similarly with, with these, if you're in the, uh, traditional commercial corridor or city core, a 50% discount is applied. So jumping down, we then will look at the roadway impact fee cost and then further down, the water and wastewater impact fees. And then they'll all roll up into the total. So on this example, we're going to show residential. We have all the other land use categories here. And then, uh, symbol, single-family detached housing. So let's say we have 100 dwelling units. That shows that we have a roadway impact fee for roadway service area one of 768. So that should is reflected here. We'll have 100 wi- water connections, 100 wastewater connections. And then we look down at the bottom and like Eddie said, this is, is the total assessed impact fee, but the total collected, uh, is down to 120,768. So I want to also show, uh, what, what might change that. So if we instead go to the top and this is actually happening, uh, a year later in 2023, if we look back down, it's now up to 181, 152. And that's because of the impact fees scaling between now and 2026, uh, to that total. If we instead, one more change, say, no, this was not submitted, the plat was not submitted prior to November 3rd, then we're going to see that full impact fee of 301,920 in this case.
Uh, what, what's, um, if you can go to the roadway component again, um,
Sure.
So within the land use categories there, there's five basic land use types. And then within each one of those categories in the, in the land use type is the pulled-down menu that shows, will show a variety of land uses. So for residential, you'll see single-family, the multifamily, some mid-rise residential, uh, continuing and assisted living type facilities. But then within the other categories, and we're going to go into another, uh, example, a, a commercial cat, uh, example, so you can see how, what some of those land use types are and then the, that are involved with each one of those, uh, general categories. But then more importantly, under the development unit, obviously residential is, is based on the typical development unit. So you just, if it's multifamily, just punch in the total number of units. When you get into the non-residential, it's going to be on a per-thousand-square-foot basis. So 200,000 square foot of industrial, you just plug in 2,000. I'm sorry, uh, 200. Uh, and so you, that's that, that's the only nuance, so that way it calculates, uh, correctly. Okay, um, that was kind of a residential question. Oh, did, let's go back to the service area one and show what happens if it's in the infill. If it's within, in, in the infill, when we say service area one, in, in the pulled-down menu below, if it qualifies for a single-family or infill- if it qualifies for a single-family infill exemption. Yeah, that's within that defined area that's that's the core of downtown Waco. And there's a map, associated map that goes along with that. If you if you go within within that infill zone, then obviously there's, it changes the impact fee, that there's no impact fee collected. All right, you want to run through another example there?
Yeah, absolutely. So we instead switch this over to commercial or retail. And then we can choose All Suites Hotel or rather just a regular hotel. Don't need an All Suites version. So let's say we put in a hundred and twenty-five rooms. That shows the roadway impact fee, six thirty-seven, fifty. And then we wouldn't have a hundred five-eighth inch meters. That's for a single-family home. Instead, we might have one two-inch for both of these.
And that's a two-inch water connection and a two-inch wastewater connection. So that's that's where there's a little more engineering involved on the size of meter to provide certain land use, you know, service. So but again, for, you know, being able to pull down this cost calculator and to be able to figure out generally what the impact fee is going to be, this is what it's aimed at. Again, when they go in and meet with staff for that initial meeting, that's when, you know, this thing will be used in more detail.
So here we see total collected impact fee of thirty-two, six forty-seven, fifty. But let's go up to the top and say this hotel was actually in roadway service area nine. That really changes it significantly because we have very different roadway impact fees by the different service areas. So what you're seeing here happen now is the total collected impact fee stopping at seventy-five thousand dollars. And that's because if the, you can look at this this note down here, if the collected water and wastewater impact fees exceed seventy-five thousand per lot, then no roadway impact fee will be collected. That's not happening here. Water and wastewater total out to a little over thirty thousand. But if the collected water and wastewater impact fees do not exceed seventy-five thousand, as is happening here, then the total collected impact fee will not exceed seventy-five. So even though roadway is around fifty thousand, water and wastewater come out to around thirty, so you're looking at about eighty, it stops at seventy-five thousand.
That was, again, aligned with the caps that were considered as part of the non-residential component, where we'd have that seventy-five thousand dollar cap there. Obviously, if the project was in the ETJ, since you don't have roadway impact fees, well, then it would be the true water and wastewater and what's what's going on or what the collection rate is within the ETJ area or outside the city limits. So just a couple of brief examples there. Clint, I'll turn it back to you if there's any other comments you might want to add on with regards to the cost calculator.
No, you know, as you can see, you know, it provides for most of the variables in the ordinance. There's always going to be some nuance there that we'll have to work through. I just would remind the council, you know, because of the phasing portion of the ordinance, which again, I think is the right thing to do, that we worked through the development community and did that. And with the two-year exemption, a lot of what you're seeing built now or in, you know, the near future is not, there will not be collecting impact fees on those because of those exemptions. And we'll open it up for any comments or questions.
Any questions for Clint or comments?
Yeah, this is Holmes. Clint and Mr. Haas, Mr. Sullivan, thank you for that, the presentation and the walk-through of the calculator. That's great. Clint, I have a quick question. Have we made any effort to see, and I don't know, this may be too nebulous of a question, but using either like twenty nineteen actual new development or twenty twenty actual new development, at least putting some of that into this calculator, I still want to get an idea. And as we talked about this last year, I want to get an idea, how much are we going to expect to generate? And I know one year is not exactly like another year. And right now, we've got a lot of development going on. So I would think we would serve an apex of of generation, cash generation, which is our revenue generation, which we're looking to get. Obviously, the only reason, the reason we're doing this is to address the infrastructure needs in the areas that they're, that these projects are occurring. But have we, is there a way just to see, I mean, I would be so curious to see, if this was in place in twenty eighteen, what, you know, what revenue stream would it have generated in a, you know, in a full bore, a hundred percent?
Sure.
Because to me, that means that's a tax-based relief for the rest of our, the rest of our revenue generation.
Sure, we have done some calculations on full implementation, you know, when it gets to the twenty twenty-four, based on twenty nineteen numbers that we can provide you. It's hard to do kind of the phasing because that variable from twenty nineteen, you don't know, you know, how it fits in. But you can, we can definitely calculate it for, you know, what came in like twenty nineteen as far as permits. And once this is fully implemented, what it would have generated as far as.
Twenty nineteen and it's a hundred percent, you know. Do twenty, forty, sixty, eighty if you want to.
We can, we can, we can provide that to you.
Thanks a lot, Clint. Great, great result here that we've all been sort of thinking about and looking forward to. And great work, Freezing Nichols guys, appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Hey Clint, thank you also for the presentation. Eddie, Johnny, thank you so much for for being here virtually this afternoon. And so thank you for walking us through this process. I do have a few questions regarding the calculator or the calculation worksheet, I should say. When a developer, a potential developer keys in the date, is that the date of completion, the date of application? What date are we asking for specifically there?
So there's, there's two different ones. So the preliminary plat gets you the phase in. So that that top date, and Eddie and Johnny might have to correct me if I'm wrong, but the the top date where you have all the information about the development is when it's coming for development. And then that second under sixteen is when it was done for plating.
Yeah, so Clint's right. The the date you plug in is the date that you're anticipating receiving either preliminary plat approval and/or the final plat approval. But because previously there were some multi-phase developments that had already received approval, preliminary plan approval, and that their grandfather to a certain extent, you know, we had to put a date in there so they could they could calculate, you know, make their calculation, in other words. And so based on when they're pulling a permit, whether there's X number of units within year one or year two, I think we're exempt for a couple of years. But year three, four, and five, they can, based on what their previous approvals were and what they're going to be bringing forward, they have that ability to use that sliding scale. So and that's why it's important that we, on the qualifications piece, that we have that highlighted because we just don't know who has been been through the process and received those approvals. But with regards to the the top one, that's when the anticipated date of going before P and Z and receiving preliminary and/or receiving final approval from Waco.
Just a suggestion that might, we might want to warrant, just a clarification. Because when I look at date, I think of what's today's date. And that's what I'm going to key in there. And so maybe just for a point of clarification, we might want, clarification, we might want to do that. Also, as far as the case plat number, if they already have that and they key in their case or plat number, will the rest of it auto-populate or they still have to go through each individual cell?
They would need to go through the cells, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that at length, about how we could integrate this with GIS. And then in the end, we felt that, you know, in order for anyone to be able to use this and there's no break in the attaching to the data engine within the city or something, we felt like, okay, let's try to simplify this as much as possible so that a number could be calculated versus if the thing, the system is down or something's broken in the link, that then they couldn't do any calculation at all. So unfortunately, it doesn't auto-populate, nor is there a place where you could put a pin. Ideally, it'd be great to do that, but we felt for this first go-round to try to make it as simple as possible.
Yeah, and I think another plus of that is, you know, a developer can use this tool before they submit anything into the city just to get an estimate of like, what fees am I going to be?
I just didn't know, like, if they already had submitted their plans to the city, would it be easier to auto-populate it? But I completely.
That could be version two point oh.
One and a half or something. Under qualifications, an outside developer that's coming into the city, maybe has never developed in the city, how would they know if they qualify for some type of an exemption?
So.
They haven't submitted their plans yet. This is just like they're doing preliminary work here.
So the the website is a good resource. There's a lot of information, like I said, that that those guidelines, that kind of that fact sheet has a lot of that information just in, you know, verbiage where you don't even have to get into the calculator.
Sure.
And then, you know, obviously, if they have questions, they can contact staff and walk through it. Because, you know, as this moves along, those variables will change based on the phasing until we get to that full implementation stage in twenty twenty-five.
And then I know another question was like, you know, are you developing in the map? Or excuse me, in the in the corridor, the city or on the outskirts? Once again, an outside developer, would they have a map or access to a map to see where they're developing and what they qualify for?
Yes, sir. So those maps are actually embedded into this worksheet as well as has links onto the, on the website where you can just click on the link and it pulls up the map.
And then you answered my last question, but there will be a staff member that someone can call or email or something of that sort if they have questions or just having.
Yeah, and that's that's one thing I just realized, looking at the webpage, we need to add a phone number, contact phone number on that.
Well, you know, those are just, I think it's great. I'm glad we're moving forward with this. I know that it's already live on our website. And so, you know, thank you for bringing this presentation over. And I think if we can just make those points of clarification just for making it more easy to read, I think would be beneficial to us. But thank you overall. And Eddie and Johnny, thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
Clint, I appreciate your work on this. And the guys at Freezing Nichols, I appreciate seeing you all again and all your hard work here. I know I was able to labor alongside the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. And it's been a long time. So I do have a question kind of as a refresher, although I didn't love seeing the video of myself wearing the exact same suit and tie that I am today. Memorialize going forward. I promise my wardrobe is more extensive than just one suit, but. I did want to ask Clint, it looks like that we had a per-lot clap, I'm sorry, a per-lot cap at seventy-five thousand. And in terms of per-lot, I mean, when you're talking about a subdivision plat, I mean, there may be fifty to a hundred lots on any given plat. If you're talking commercially, though, generally, it can be often just one lot, but it could be a large, can you kind of elaborate on that a little bit in terms of how that cap functions at seventy-five thousand?
Sure, so that's really going to apply more to your commercial, you know, because when you look at a per-lot cost for residential, you know, once we get this fully implemented, you know, in the areas that have a lot of the infrastructure needs on the edge, you know, it's a forty-five hundred dollar per lot.
That's right. Okay, that's right. So this is the commercial cap.
Yeah, so the cap on commercial against per lot. So I mean, it could be, you know, typically, you'll see commercial developments that are, you know, like a shopping center will be on one lot, but it will have out parcels like Central Texas Marketplace. You know, it has the one large lot for the kind of the big box stores. And there's probably twenty or thirty out parcel lots that have the restaurants and the hotels and banks and whatnot. So that cap is is per lot. So each one of those would be subject to the fee. So and then same with industrial. Usually your industrials are one-lot developments. You know, you might get some warehouse space that's multi-lot. But typically, those are large one-lot developments, so those those caps apply to those.
So for the most part, businesses coming in will have a sense of what the worst-case scenario is.
Right, so where you're going to get more than the seventy-five thousand is where you have large water users that have large, large water demands. Typically, that's going to be more than a four-inch, four-inch or more water meter, which are, I think, on a percentage-wise, are like less than two percent of the, you know, the meters that we have in our inventory. It might even be less than that, but it's it's very, the very largest water users are going to be above that seventy-five thousand.
Thank you.
Thanks, Clint and Freezing Nichols team for bringing all of this live. My one question is, how many clicks does it take to get here on the website?
So you're, you're two, three. So you're in, well, the click to get to the city website and then the planning website and an impact fee.
Okay, and is it, so, you know, the conversation that we've had about clarity, and I know that we're working diligently about cleaning up our our website and making it far more user-friendly. I just want to make sure that said developer doesn't have to go crawling under the interwebs to find the calculator. So I think that that's one of the things just on our side that we want to make sure. And because this is new, is there a banner for it? You know, I mean, I don't know that that's something you want to bring attention to, but, you know, how would people know it's there? I mean, I guess the people, developers know to look for it now because it's a thing. But I mean, if it's just information that we want to see clear and made clear, you know, how are we?
Sure. And one thing we're working on doing is, you know, we have a developer's guide that has all that information in one place, and we'll get it added to that. So they'll be able to link directly to it from the developer's guide as well.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Great, great presentation. Great questions from council. Second gem's request to evaluate tax-based impacts and to explore tax relief options that might be available. One thing I wanted to note is you mentioned the developer group that meets monthly, Clint. What, is that the third Thursday of the month?
Third Thursday of the month.
At nine AM? Are we all meeting in person or still by Zoom right now?
We are, we're going to move to hopefully a hybrid model. Because we have noticed that we've getting a little bit more participation where people can just click on from where they are. So but there, you know, some that do still want to come meet in person. So we're going to try next month to do a hybrid where you can come in person and then also participate, you know, virtually.
I think it's a great resource to our development community is this monthly meeting to kind of sit around a table virtually or in person, to sit around a table and really discuss the issues and policies that are impacting development in Waco. Because I think it really allows you guys to just have a real honest conversation about exploring the tension between development and city that will probably always exist and hopefully the most healthy format possible. And that's a great meeting that even today, I was talking to a home builder who was unaware that that meeting was taking place. And so I think that just as an aside, I would encourage our, you know, between the AGC and the Home Builders Association and the list of people applying, just continue to push that as an opportunity for the development community to sit down and hear the issues of the day and talk it out with y'all to make sure that we're implementing good policy. I think it's a really great resource, and I'm thankful that you and your staff take the time to host that meeting with the development community. I think it's good just to remind, like, as a reminder of how we got to this point and that, you know, this was made up of a community that included members of the development community that was assembled and that we took a really measured approach in how we've rolled out these impact fees as compared to other other cities. And I think that it's going to be important for us to continue to monitor this. And if we need to make tweaks as we go, if we see development being chilled in one sector or there's an unintended consequences that's occurring, we need to be smart and on our toes to make adjustments when we need to. So please, I'm going to ask you to monitor that.
Sure.
And then if we get warranted frustrations over unintended consequences, we need to be be quick to adjust, I believe.
So just one, one point on that comment. So state law, and it's just a good practice, does require the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, the staff that submit, reports to them every six months and have meetings. So, you know, that will start, you know, the clock starts today. So we'll be having a meeting with them at the end of the year to talk about those things you just mentioned.
And that's not the nine o'clock development group. This is the committee that was assembled.
Plan Commission plus the four developers.
That's right.
That were appointed to that.
Right. And so it's developers from the community. Do you remember who was on that committee off the top of your head?
It was Kim Cooper, David Mercer, Herb Cross, and Scott Bland.
So developers in our community, home builders and commercial developers in our community. So I think, again, there is a voice for that community as we go forward. And that's great. I didn't realize that y'all would be meeting. So that's great to know that 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 we'll continue to meet and evaluate those potential unintended consequences. So I think this is great. I think this is going to allow us to continue to fund critical infrastructure needs in our community and really ensure that we're growing in a healthy way. Last thing I'll say is, I think that one of the the things that we see in this is that these exemptions for the core city of the city. And one thing I've heard from a few home builders is it's not our bread and butter to build the homes in the core. We understand how to build homes in. We understand how to build homes in the greenfield. Is there a way that the city could help us understand how to better build homes in the core of our city? And so I don't know if there's a conversation to have or a playbook that we want to generate, but as we continue to look at that, you know, it's out of their, some people, they have a playbook for greenfield development, which, by the way, we're great with and want to continue, and we're excited about the continual healthy greenfield development that we'll continue to see and homes that will continue to be built. But just as we were talking through this, it made me realize that there might be some just informational support that we can give for incentives and, you know, just any information that they might be lacking to say, like, we've never really done core development for home building before, we really don't, how does that, you know, how does that become easy for us? That was kind of the question that got posted to me by a home builder today, who's not used to doing that. And so I think that that conversation could be fruitful and worthwhile. Great presentation. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Our last work session today is Work Session 2021-327, a discussion of Cameron Park K zoo capital projects. I'm joined by Chris Van Scott, Director of the Cameron Park Zoo, and he'll be guiding the presentation today, discussing the progress on the first project to the expansion at our beautiful city-owned and operated zoo.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here today proud to present to you an update on our upcoming county bond projects. And, next slide, please. This slide illustrates the four main components of the upcoming work, and it also includes a society contribution of $720,000 in donations to help reduce the cost of these projects. The first component listed is the education and veterinary complex. This will be a new building located at the front of the zoo in between the existing parking lot and 4th Street. Another component will be a penguin exhibit. This will be a new exhibit, and this will be located in the back of the zoo in between Treetops Cafe and our existing herpetarium. Another component will be the hoofstock barn. This will be located next to our existing giraffe barn. This barn will be a new construction, and it will take the place of an existing hoofstock barn, which is original to the zoo, built in the early 90s. I would also note, the hoofstock barn estimation, 834-589,000, is reflective of a current bidding process in which we've had two rounds of bidding, and also includes the architectural services which have been completed on this project. And the last component is a commissary remodel. This is a building that is currently at the zoo and houses our kitchen, where we prepare animal diets to feed all of our 1,600 animals. So the thinking is, the first three components will come online. Once we complete the veterinary complex adjacent, we'll then go in and remodel the commissary, essentially the kitchen portion of that project, to support the veterinary Next slide, please. Also included are contingencies for cost estimation at 10% and construction at 5%. When we add those, we come up with a total of $15,264,508. We subtract the society fundraising donation to get to our bond issue amount, our county bond, which is $14,545. Next slide, please. Thank you. What you see here in the upper right-hand corner is the original hoofstock barn design. This project we designed last year, we bid this out in the fall, and this is our planned first project to come online. And what you see here in the lower left-hand corner is the current value engineered design. The difference between these two involves, we did, after receiving our first round of bids, which exceeded our project estimate, we did some value engineering, we removed a central hallway, which is illustrated in the upper right-hand drawing, and we consolidated some of our heating units and some of our mechanical, other mechanical, electrical plumbing, just in an effort to provide some cost savings and try to bring the project in line with the original project estimate. Unfortunately, with some of the recent material cost escalations and a very busy contractor market, we have received results from our second bids. Next slide, please. And here you see our original project budget for the barn at 375,000. Our lowest second-round bid, project-based bid, plus alternates one and two totaled 765,720. We did, at that point, meet with representatives from the city of Waco. We worked with our partners at General Services, who have been instrumental and very helpful in helping us bring these projects to fruition. We met with our zoological society, received recommendations, then presented to Zoo Commission, and received a recommendation to move forward with the project with project-based bid plus alternates one and two. We then presented to the county commissioners' court and received their approval to do so. So this project has received county commissioner court approval for the reallocation of project funds from the penguin habitat to the hoofstock barn in the amount of 389,720. Next slide, please. Here you will see the breakdown of some of the description I just provided. The chart on the left-hand side shows those first-round bids from the fall of 2020. We received two contractor bids, and this matrix breaks down the base bid plus the alternate one, two, and three. And the alternates for this project are listed in the box below. Alternate one was a chain link fence replacement, which was some chain link fencing that is, was original to the yard. Alternate two is rubber flooring in the animal stalls, and alternate three is an ISOP board install gypsum sheathing, which is essentially mats that go on the wall that we sometimes use in certain stalls. So our first-round bids came in at 928,851 and 625,900. We then submitted those on a resolution to council to reject those bids, and we then value engineered the project, performed some cost savings measures while still maintaining the quality and care standards necessary to maintain animals in the new hoofstock barn. And as you'll see in the upper right-hand boxes, the second-round bids came in at the first of the year, and we received two, the first totaling 925,485, the second at 802,720. This is the information that we did present to Zoo Commission, and the highlighted numbers are the recommendation provided, which was the base bid plus alt one plus alt two. And that is what we presented to the county commissioners. So after completing the value engineering, our lowest base bid in round two did go up by 141,500. And we presented to county commissioners this request and received approval in that Now, one point worth mentioning is, at this point, you know, when we were using some of our original estimates from the 1819 presentation, we began our conversations with the zoological society, who has already begun additional fundraising efforts for our future projects, because we do realize as things progress, you know, we're going to need some additional funding, so. So, in summary, on the hoofstock barn, after two rounds of bidding, we do have a lowest qualified bidder, which is presented to you today in a resolution, and that is a general For the barn, our project timeline includes roughly six months of construction. The construction start will be estimated in June of this month. We've already relocated the animals that needed to be relocated in that hoofstock yard, and this, the project is adjacent to our existing giraffe yard. And substantial completion is scheduled for the Thanksgiving timeframe of this year, with move-in final completion in December of 2021. The second update I'd like to provide is an update on our education veterinary complex. And this slide shows a rendering of that building, which is currently shown as a two-story building with a brick facade, which does match the front of the zoo, which matches the ticket booth and the entrance area of the zoo. This will be located near the front, just to the left of our existing parking lot. As you're looking at the zoo, there's a triangle of land there between the parking lot and 4th Street. And this final slide is information that shows original pricing on the left and details submitted by our architect. On the right, the left-hand table shows a breakdown of the original cost estimate, and it's broken down by area, the veterinary, the vet hospital, the support space, the office space, the education space, the site construction. Those are all broke down individually with pricing per cost per area, as well as cost pricing per square footage, giving us a construction estimate of $7,416,926, and a design estimate of $918,750, which is a 12% calculation of the construction fees, giving us the total at 833-5676. On the right-hand side is the CCL, or the construction cost limitation from the architectural contract. You see the CCL on this project, they've listed at $7,418, which does closely match our estimate on the left. And the blue box represents their proposed fees, which currently also match or under and match the design estimate fees listed on the left, which was the 12% of the project. So lastly, of the 24 RFPs we received, our selection committee has recommended an architect for this project, which you also have as a resolution in today's council meeting. And that concludes the bond project update for the first two exciting zoo projects that will be coming online this year. And I would be very happy to answer or entertain any questions, comments you may have. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
This holds a couple of quick questions. Chris, thanks for the presentation and the update. Appreciate it. And I'm really going to go into our council packet, page 113, that shows our original budget, and then the revised budget, and then I'm trying to reconcile the presentation with the, with our packet. So we're over, obviously, the hoofstock went over, right? So we're, conceptually, we'll make up that difference either with a zoological society fundraising or and/or maybe the modifying the penguin project. That's kind of the thought process right now, right? So the other part of it is, and it wasn't quite clear, and this goes to your last page of your presentation, Chris. So that $8,335,000, that's basically what we had estimated in our original estimates, right? I'm trying to follow, what is our, what was our original budget versus where is this coming in, or have we even priced this yet, or that's where I'm...
What was the number that you mentioned?
On your last page of your presentation, you show $8,335,000 for the...
Yes, sir.
Education vet. Is that what we had in the original budget?
That was the original breakdown price provided. Yes, the table, the...
Forbid yet, is what you're saying.
That is correct. The table on the left represents the 2018-29 calculations for this work, and it has not been put out for bid yet.
All right. So that's where I was trying to follow the time. So we, do we have a general, I guess we don't know, when do we, what's the timing on this again, as far as putting it out for bid, this part?
We do. It is, it is ready for approval as a resolution to be assigned or to go enter a contract with the architectural firm of Perkins and Will. And their timeline includes, in the contract, six months of design, which takes us towards the end of the year, and then time for bidding. With their construction schedule, it's listed as a 12-month construction schedule. So we're looking at six months of design, bidding, and then construction beginning early next year with completion in the November-December timeframe of 2022.
Okay. I see that now. On page 116, six months of the drawings, and so by the first part of next year, we'll get a view or as to what this, how close we were on this one, right?
Yes, sir.
Sounds good. I mean, construction, everything has gone up, so it's nobody's fault or anything, it's just like, you know, construction costs have gone up. We, as I understand, this part, the hoofstock, had some compliance issues also that we need to address, so the quicker that we get this thing on track, that we need, we need to do this anyway. So it's got some other compelling reasons to get, to get going on it. I hope that this, the complex, the education veterinary complex are, I hope we're a little bit closer on that, but I get it. I just don't want to end up where we end up with one penguin standing next to a Yeti Cooler, and that's our, and that's our penguin exhibit.
Yes, sir.
So, anyway, that's, good work. I appreciate it.
I got the visual, Jim. I got the visual. Hey, Chris, thank you so much for your presentation also. I'm very excited that we are seeing this. Do have a few questions for you. So just, just to clarify, so the total cost for the projects, whether it's a new addition or the remodeling of some buildings, is $15.2 million, correct?
That is correct.
And the bond that the voters voted on is $14.5 million. And so the difference is approximately $719,000 and some change, which the zoo society wants to fundraise for.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, is the cost for the education and vet complex 8.355 million or 8.335 million? I see two different numbers. And I know in the grand scheme of things, it's only $20,000, but it's still $20,000.
Yes, the, on the first slide, our, we were using an original estimated expansion project cost of the 83, so the 20,000 could be, could be added.
Okay.
Yes.
And then as far as the, what are the plans for the, you know, once the new hoofstock barn is open and in full effect, and I know it needs to happen also because it's on, on... barn is open and in full effect, and I know it needs to happen also because it's on, on, it needs to happen here pretty soon, what is the plan for the current hoofstock barn?
The new hoofstock barn will take the place of the current hoofstock barn, so the, the existing hoofstock barn will be demolished, and the new one will be put in its place.
So you are gonna knock one, knock the old one down completely and then replace it with the new one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and just to, a little bit to council member Holmes' point, you know, I think the big, in my opinion, the largest selling point of the vote for the bond was the penguin exhibit, so I would definitely love to see that we go all out with the penguin exhibit and, and really give back to the voters what they voted on, and especially, you know, this council that, that was so excited about the penguin exhibit, and I agree, you know, there, there might be some costs that have increased over the last several months, which I think it's affected many parts of, of construction of our city, but, but I definitely wanna see that penguin exhibit just come to full fruition and really wow our voters, because I think that was the huge selling point for the bond, so thank you for that.
Other questions or comments? Thank you so much, I also wanna thank the county for being a good partner on this project, and look forward to continuing to move forward.
Thank you.
And Bradley, I believe that's all of the work session presentations we have today, is that correct?
That is correct.
Are there any requests for future agenda items? All right, we will now recess the work session, and we, because we do not have an executive session, we will just recess the work session to reconvene into the business section at six PM, at that time, so, we are now recessed.
At four-twelve.